We will start with Mr. Franklin Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am still Franklin Williams, still at 528 West Market Street. Diana, did you bring your cake timer? I thought you might have forgotten that I meant to bring a fork so you could poke it in me and see if I'm done. But I'll try to stay within the time limit. I want to very briefly point out to you folks, as I have two or three times over recent years, that it was probably pretty dark when you got here. It was probably pretty dark by 4:30 or 5 o'clock. That happens this time of the year. I live on Market Street. It never gets dark out front when I take my trash out, whether it's 5:00 PM or midnight, or 3:00 in the morning. A lot of our residents don't live in such well-lighted areas. And the only way they can safely take their trash out before 5:00 PM is to break the law. I've suggested two or three times over the years that that ordinance ought to be based on daylight, not on clock time. I'm hoping that if not this council, the next one, might think safety of our residents, especially our elderly residents, is as important as the ease of enforcement. As a past council president said, it might make it more difficult to enforce. Well, I hope the city is not employing people who would not understand that two hours before sunset means two hours before sunset. It doesn't really seem that difficult to me. The main thing I wanted to discuss was I remember a meeting of my neighborhood association, probably 16 or 18 years ago. And we did some pretty good things while we were active. But I thought most of the monthly meetings were just about piss and moan, complain, gripe and bellyache, about this, that, and the other thing. And one evening, somebody complained about the condition of Mason Alley, Mason Avenue. They said, the holes, the bumps. And they said, well, I didn't say much. So then the next person complained about the speeding down the alley. They said, did I think, because as you know, I've probably attended and participated in more city council meetings than anyone else alive, or maybe dead. They said, did I think that council might be willing to put a couple of speed bumps in? The 400 and 500 blocks of Mason. I said, I didn't think probably our alley would rise to that level. I said, frankly, I'd rather put in two or three speed bumps on Market Street. Now, I realize there, there's probably, you know, an issue because Market Street is a state route. So PennDOT would have something to say about installing speed bumps on it. Unfortunately, the Pennsylvania State Police don't think it's a state route, nor do they apparently think that the city of York is worth bothering with. I have not seen a state police car in I don't know how long. And I know why, because they are busy giving such great service to those people in red lines and the rural townships who keep their tax rate down to a small fraction of ours by using the state police for ordinary police services. We could do that. I wouldn't want to live here. So anyway, when somebody brought up the condition of the alley again, and I said, the bumps and the holes are not that bad, I said, think of them as reverse speed bumps. They didn't know whether to laugh or what. I said, no, I'm serious. They probably helped to keep the speed down a little bit. Several weeks ago, we got a brand-new alley. It has got to be the prettiest several thousand square feet of pavement in the city of York. Because there's not even, you know, a personhole cover to bump to hit. It's smooth as a tabletop from Hartley to West Street and from side to side. I am curious, since people used to do 40 and 50 down the alley, if the smooth surface is going to speed them up or slow them down. I think I know which way. I understand that the speed limit in the alleys in the cities is 15 miles per hour. That's a distant. And it's not only spending money needlessly, in my opinion, but the street-sweeping parking, no parking signs on the poles are so faded that you just about have to climb a ladder and get your nose up against them to read them. Really, at least in my block. So, and I've gotten into some kind of remote neighborhoods, admittedly off the main streets, looking for a street, and there's no street sign anywhere on the intersection. I think we need to do better on that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Rolada.
Marie Rolada, 200 North Duke Street. And I'm here to complain about the same thing I complained about last year at this time and have been complaining about. And Mr. Franklin here was talking about the same thing. It's called lighting. Tonight, when I turned from King Street, where there's plenty of light, into the alley, I did not see anyone. By the time I got close to the handicap ramp, I saw that a man was walking toward the parking lot. I saw him not because of your lights, but because the bank was nice enough to put a nice bright light out. I should have been able to see him when I turned into the alley. I should not have to wait until the bank light showed him. I've spoken about this before. I feel perfectly safe walking home once I get to King Street. I do not feel safe right outside the door. And there is a light pole right out there, and there's been no light in it, not all last year and not this year. And, you know, I know this has been turned into everybody. And it still hasn't been taken care of. And your safety, since you, after dark, go out those doors, should be a concern to you, as not just my safety. But let's face it, everybody in this building normally can say something or do something to piss off one of the crazies around who will then decide that using an assault rifle outside is wonderful. And if you don't see anything, and it shocked me that someone was walking and I didn't see them. So please try again. I know you've tried before and nothing's happened.
Thank you, Ms. Rolada. Up next, we have Ms. Samantha Dorm.
Good evening and thank you. Samantha Dorm, 1200 Block of East Prospect Street. No complaints. I'm actually coming bearing gifts as well as to offer an invitation. So I do volunteer at Lebanon Cemetery, which is located in North York, 1412 North George Street. However, Lebanon Cemetery, a historic Black cemetery, is the final resting place of individuals who primarily lived in the city of York. In 1872 is when Lebanon Cemetery was created, simply for the fact that Black families here wanted to be able to bury their loved ones with dignity and respect. But we couldn't purchase land at that time in the city. And that's how our cemetery ended up, in North York. Next week, on December 16th, we will be honoring our veterans at Lebanon Cemetery with the Reeves Across America Program. The program starts at 10:30 in the morning. And then we will have a brief ceremony at approximately 11 o'clock. So volunteers are encouraged to come out to lay the reeves. We were able to get sponsors for all of our veterans, which is over 300 that we have at Lebanon Cemetery. So we do encourage you to come out. And then in regards to the gifts, recently, we have published three books that are all about individuals from Lebanon Cemetery, York's Black history. I know every year in February, we're always looking for individuals that we can talk about and that we can spotlight. And I would like to encourage you all to look right here in York, Pennsylvania, because we have many people who achieved great things, not just locally, statewide, nationally, and some internationally. So I have the books here for you. And I also want to personally thank Mayor Helfrich, who has on many occasions helped us with research for those individuals at Lebanon Cemetery. Thank you, sir.
Typically, we don't speak during public comments, but you also did a great job with finding a lot of Latino, Hispanic veterans out there and families, right?
Yes, thank you.
Can you allude?
We do have a section of the cemetery that has a number of Latino families. And we actually want to encourage them to come out. We haven't had much contact with them, so the same thing, not just for that weekend, but ongoing. And if there's any way to get some assistance, maybe to have some of our literature translate it, to please do that. The other point would be for our families, anyone that's willing to share pictures, to share information about their families, we want to be able to continue to spotlight them. We do have a website as well as a Facebook page that we put this information up. So again, York, Pennsylvania, we have so many who have achieved great things. The first Black police officer, city police officers, starting in 1897, Lebanon Cemetery. Our first Black physician, the founders of York's Black churches. We have no less than six individuals in Lebanon Cemetery who are spotlighted at the African-American History Museum in Washington, DC. And yet, we don't celebrate them here. Let's work to change that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comment or non-agenda items only? Hearing none, we will adjourn our public comment session, and I will call our legislative meeting to order at 6:16 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Rivera?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Walker?
Here. And if you were able to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
We will take action on previous meeting minutes from November 21st, 2023. Any changes to those minutes, counsel?
None.
I have none.
All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. No presentations, awards, or announcements. Our next legislative meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Agenda items are due by 12:00 noon on December 13th. No prior committee referral reports, so we will move to our legislative agenda. Of first final passes of bills and resolutions. And we have final passes of Bill Number 52.
Is there a motion to remove Bill Number 52 from the table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Has been removed from the table, and now final adoption. And I move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from counsel?
None.
I have none.
No.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Good evening, counsel. I apologize, I'm under the weather. And I'm going to try to get through this the best I can, because I don't feel very well. But my name is Lavelle Howe. I'm the founder of Prodigy Spectrum Management.
Did you say, say the name again?
Lavelle, L-A-V-E-L-L-E, Howe, H-O-W-E-L-L.
Okay. And what you're affiliated with, you just said that, and I missed it.
Yes, ma'am. I'm the founder of Prodigy Spectrum. It's a personal care home for veterans that's homeless or displaced. And we are located right here in York City. If I, since I'm on it, I just wanted to briefly tell you a little bit about us. Like I said, we are a personal care home for homeless or in-displaced veterans. We are the official contractor with the Department of Veterans Affairs. We just got approved for 20 veterans. We got approved on November the 15th, so we'll be able to house 20 veterans directly from the Department of Veterans Affairs. I'm here today to try to look for financial support in the effort to support our veterans further in housing. One of the things I noticed, I work directly with social workers in the Department of Veterans Affairs. And the problem is, the social workers are overworked. Meaning, they're just looking for a place for our veterans, but it may not be the proper place. So we want to kind of be a one-stop shop for veterans. Meaning, when veterans come to us, we want to be able to provide them emergency housing, allowing me enough time to work with the veteran to see where they properly should be placed. One of the reasons our veterans are displaced is because the social worker goal is to find them housing, but it may not be the proper housing. So they get displaced. One of the things that we do in personal care, we do medication management, also give them three meals along with housing. We do transportation to medical appointments, whether it's Lebanon or York. We also do activities three times a week for our veterans. But we need to do more. One of the things to do more is, once they come to us, I want to be able to place them in a proper place. Maybe they don't need personal care. They may also qualify for a program called HUBVASH. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, where they can get a one-bedroom apartment that's paid for. It's kind of like Section 8. The problem is, once they receive the HUBVASH voucher, they're on their own. So most of them don't succeed in HUBVASH program. We want to continue our personal care along, when they go in the HUBVASH program. I don't, right now, all the funding that started with this is through me and my husband. The first personal care home I have, we did everything, from the furniture to the building. We did every single thing. But our efforts wasn't unnoticed. That's how, I'm sorry, that's how we were able to get the contract that we have. Now, we're about to open up a bigger facilities, almost 5,000 square feet, at 626 West Market Street. This is where we will put our 20 veterans. There used to be a personal care home, but again, we're financing this on our own. In our second phase, and I know the budget is for next year, if we can get the funding to be able to do emergency shelter, get a building for emergency shelter, I have personal care, but then also, I'll be able to purchase buildings for one-bedroom apartment where I can manage these veterans, so we can keep them off the street. Getting them off the street is not the problem, keeping them off the street is the issue. And I have seen success, great success, in the work that we're doing. So I do have a lot of support in the community of what we're doing. Ms. Susan Burns. Yesterday, she came and visited the facility. She's on board with what we're doing. Also, Terry, the director of York County Veterans Affairs. We are members of the Veteran Network. We're out there, but we just need to know, let the city know that we're here. We are a support system for our veterans, we're here. And a lot of you guys, I don't think, know that it is a problem, but it is a huge problem. And one of, a lot of York County veterans get displaced in other counties. When social workers place them, it's really nowhere to put them in York County. So they'll put them in another county, they get displaced. And now they're homeless in a county they don't even know. And then the same thing happened in York. They may come to York, they get displaced, and now they're in York and they're displaced. So I'm just here, just trying to seek funding and let you guys know that Prodigy Spectrum is here. We are working hard, we are on the ground, working hard to keep our veterans off the street. And if you guys can support us or help us any way, I appreciate it. You're more than welcome to come and see what we do. I extend an invitation to any of you guys, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do for our veterans. Any other public comment?
Real quick, Lavelle, where is your first, you said you're moving to 626 West Market. Where is your first, where's the location of the first place?
We're not moving. We're keeping 656 Salem Avenue. That's where we're located now. We're just expanding. Now, we're moving to 6, it's ironic, we got those same numbers, but 626 West Market Street.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just point out that this approval, as I recall, as I read it this evening, is probably one of the largest single appropriations of ARPA funds. It now totals, with the addition of 500,000, it now totals four times the appropriation a few weeks or months ago to assist nonprofit organizations that have been active and have track records of accomplishment. But it is a huge problem. No one can deny that. Investors have priced property up out of the reach of many city residents, working city residents. They have been exacerbating something that probably would have been occurring anyway. And it certainly is something that we should be doing, doing something about. So I, but I hope that, you know, this is an appropriation of a major amount of money with a great lack of detail. And I understand that it's going to be planned, it's going to be executed carefully, and I hope, I hope transparently. Thank you.
Once again, Samantha Dorm. First and foremost, I want to commend both counsel and the administration as we see the movement of your American Rescue Plan funding. As it relates to the line item specifically to homeless veterans, earlier this year, we had a veterans' stand-down program that was held at the Ball Stadium. And the sponsor for that was Christmas Attics. That was something that I brought to the community in January of this year, just letting folks know that there's money through the Department of Labor to work with our veterans on job training. And so what you're doing here in regards to housing can and will be complemented with other resources through the Department of Labor, through the Department of Education, as we are able to expand resources for veterans. We know just in that one day, for the number of people who were served, that we have a problem here in York, Pennsylvania. And also, it is my understanding that that program will once again take place next year. But that was done in partnership with local businesses, the trade schools, certainly with Prodigy Spectrum for the housing, as well as not only our local Veterans Affairs, but we had federal resources here in York, Pennsylvania. So thank you again, and as I mentioned, just commending you for the movement with the American Rescue Plan funding.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I would just like to comment for Mr. Williams, just to say that any programs that go through that the ARPA funds are used for are required to meet the compliance rules of ARPA funds from the federal government. So it should be transparent, and it should, it would definitely meet standards.
And that's just another plug to visit the York City website to look at the ARPA dashboard. It's an interactive dashboard with real-time updates and information for all ARPA-related here in the city of York. When it comes to the veteran housing, just my involvement in another aspect of serving the community, this was in the ARPA Recommendation Plan that was brought and published in February of 2021. There is a major issue for homeless veterans here in the city of York. And it just made sense to include this with the lump sum of funding going towards affordable housing and homeowner relief.
Counsel President, may I make a brief comment?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, we are in a national housing crisis right now. So the bulk of this fund- So, the bulk of this funding, so $500,000 for veterans' housing, 2.5 for affordable housing, that is about 10% of the budget, of the ARPA budget. Lancaster has already invested 25% of their much larger allocation, so a much larger percentage just in housing. So, this is actually a pretty modest amount to go to this compared to our neighbor across the river. So, we are hoping that this investment will spur, while it would only pay for maybe 20 units at that, with that amount, we are hoping that it would spur over 100 new units of development in the city. And it will go through an RFP process that is, that will have oversight.
And just so the public is aware, for veteran housing, it's Veteran Housing Support and Services. Any other public comment? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. And that is so ordered. Moving on to final passes of Bill Number 53.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think this one was tabled, too.
Yes, it was.
So, we just need a motion to remove from the table first.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, sorry.
Any questions or comments from Council?
I have none.
Any questions or comments from the public? Right, final approval. I move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from Council?
I have none.
I did, I asked for this to be tabled, and I got the answers that I needed. I was more confused about the same line item that originally was attached to. So, got clarification on that. Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. And that is so ordered. Moving on to final passes of Bill Number 55.
I'm sorry, that's Bill Number 55, introduced by Betsy Buckingham at the November 21st meeting of Council, adopting the 2024 York City Budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Council? Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make my general statement on the budget and the accomplishments of '23 and the goals of 2024 that are included in the budget, I did want to respond to the letter that was provided to Council. There was some question that really, some question of the use of the wastewater treatment plant funds, and it gave a great opportunity to really explain what we're doing with these funds. So, I wanted to share that with everyone. So, thank you for that opportunity. Good evening, Council President Walker and Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to address any questions regarding our strategy and use of the wastewater treatment plant sale proceeds and dividends. I am happy to reaffirm the strategy that the city administration has been following since city council voted to approve the sale of the wastewater treatment plant and sewer collection system. You were part, some of you, were part of that vote, and may recall, we were facing a 48% tax increase and a 42% sewer fee increase at that time. It was agreed that we would use proceeds from the sale of the plant to fill that deficit and avoid tax and fee increases. It was also discussed at that time that we could put off tax increases in future years with the proceeds of the plant by using investment dividends and some of the principal as necessary. There was never any illusion that the dividends from the investment would solely solve the budget gaps of the city, only that dividends would help slow the rate of use of the principal needed. Without any significant change in the revenues to the city by raising taxes and annual increases in all expenses due to inflation and market factors, the annual budget continues to see the expected annual revenue gap. By investing the proceeds in a crim dividend-producing investment, we were able to create additional revenue for the city of $9 million in 2023 and conservatively anticipate an additional $7.6 million in 2024. Thus, we were able to reduce the amount of principal required to fill the budget gap in the 2024 proposed budget to $4 million. This is a $13.3 million decrease from the $17.3 million that was budgeted in 2023. To clarify, what is included in the 2024 proposed budget, the total of $20.6 million of treatment plant sale funds, is a combination of the $16.6 million in investment earnings from 2023 and 2024, and only $4 million from the principal. These funds will be used in 2024 to pay $5.3 million in general debt service payments, paying down debts as agreed upon, $10.3 million in MMO pension payments, and the remaining $5 million will go towards the total of $12.7 million in expected health insurance expenses for 2024. So, in fact, this budget has eliminated the $5.3 million annual debt service payment that was previously being paid out of tax revenue in the general fund. The plan from the very beginning was to invest the proceeds from the plant sale and draw them down for standard expense purposes, such as the pension and health benefit expenses. From the beginning, it was well-understood that these proceeds would allow the city to remain tax-increase-free for approximately 10 to 20 years. At the current rate of drawdown and accounting for continued unavoidable inflation of the budget expenses, we expect approximately 15 years of financial stability. This strategy was discussed and understood at the time of the sale by Jason Sable, and I believe, all involved. We have not deviated from this strategy, and the administration continues to do everything reasonable to keep costs as low as possible while providing the expected services to the community and needed improvements to our infrastructure. So, I hope that satisfactory explains any question that may have come up regarding the wastewater treatment plant funds.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the response. We did request in writing, and that was the response for the public that was sent to Council that the mayor just read. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to read the Mayor's City of York Budget 2023 Statement for the 2024 Budget. "As Mayor of the City of York and in accordance with Article 18, Sections 1801 to 1811.2 of the Third Class City Code and Optional Third Class City Charter Law, I submit the City of York's Proposed Budget for Calendar Year 2024. Once again this year, I want to share my appreciation with the Budget Team, Directors, Elected Officials, and all employees involved in the arduous work of preparing an annual budget. You were able to utilize the new software in what appeared to be a seamless effort. I know that working to complete outstanding audits and other tasks didn't quite allow us to meet our internal schedule, but we did a lot better than last year, and we will surely do better next year. I'm very thankful for the teamwork shown by all of the city staff and elected officials in producing this budget. The total budget for the year 2024 is approximately $117.6 million, with a general fund budget of $69.6 million. This is an increase in the general fund from last year's budget, but this is almost entirely due to virtually uncontrollable increases in the city's insurance costs. The budget also includes over $13.6 million in the American Rescue Plan funding that will be used to enhance our police department's effectiveness, support an increase in the number of police officers, expand our group violence intervention initiative, invest in new affordable and attainable housing, support the work of York City's amazing nonprofit service providers, and continue to improve our streets and park systems. This year, we followed a very similar plan as last year, and I believe not only did city staff execute the plan well, we are now seeing results of many of our efforts. We have seen a significant drop in crime in our city. We've completed major road projects and park improvements and invested millions of dollars in building our community through supporting personal improvement programs and entrepreneurial businesses and new housing for our residents. This time, I would like to get into more detail regarding the accomplishments and goals of this administration, beginning with our Business Administration Department. In our Business Administration Department in 2023, we saw the appointment and council approval of our new Business Administrator, Kim Robertson."
You weren't here for that.
I know, but I made it happen on the back end.
Yeah, whatever.
2023 was the year for the Finance Office to be adequately and fully staffed. This has allowed the staff accountants to cover day-to-day operations, while the chief and senior accountants have had the opportunity to tackle the backlog of various issues, bringing the office to a place where they have streamlined their procedures and can address fiscal issues in a timely manner. Additionally, the Finance Team completed the implementation of OpenGov's Procurement Module, which will be used to manage the RFP process going forward and allow vendors to sign up to receive direct notice of future bid opportunities with all city departments. In 2023, the Parking Bureau initiated the update of the Residential Handicap Parking Ordinance, which improved the application process, removed all costs to the residents, and allowed for the registered handicap spaces to be assigned to individual vehicles. I hope everybody heard that. The handicap parking is for the individual that got the sign there. Imagine that. Additionally, all three parking garages are finally electric-vehicle friendly with the installation of EV chargers. In 2023, the Office of Human Resources assisted with hiring a total of 54 employees, which included 11 firefighters and a record 18 police officers. The Office of Information Technology completed a rollout for 140-plus new computers across all city departments, while also getting all conference rooms in City Hall set up with wireless presentation options. Our audiovisual assets, including White Rose Television, fall under the direction of Business Administration. In 2023, we completed improvements to council chambers that allow for all meetings to easily, to be easily streamed to the public. And upon my direction and for the sake of transparency, and thanks to White Rose Television's Cliff Kern, thank you, Cliff, he's the one that you don't see that's making this all happen, all public meetings that are held in council chambers are now streaming online for the public. Our next department is Public Works Administration. In 2023, we completed a major paving and traffic pattern change on George Street from North Street to Parkway Boulevard, thus completing the multi-year project of refurbishing all of George Street. This included the final bike and pedestrian crossing at the George Street Bridge to connect the York County Rail Trail through York City from the north at John Rudy Park, south to the Maryland Line for 27 miles, and beyond, down to Hunt Valley for a 48-mile trail. We continue our improvements of the city's park system. In 2023, we added new pavilions at Bance Park, Penn Park, and Hudson Park. We rebuilt the playground at Williams Park and began the once-in-a-lifetime revisioning master plans for Bance and Farquhar Parks, Kiwanis Lake, and Noonan Field. With assistance from our partners at the U.S. National Park Service, the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, and our York City Parks Conservancy, these extensive projects will begin in 2024 and continue on over the next few years. Additionally, within our park system, 2024 will bring new basketball courts at Memorial Park and the completion of extensive stream restorations along Willis Run, improving the water flowing into Kiwanis Lake and Cadorus Creek, and reducing flooding for those living near Parkway Boulevard. Finally, in 2024, we will begin the engineering of a complete replacement of the Market Street Bridge. Not only is the Market Street Bridge near its time for replacement, but the vast reconstruction and improvements of the Cadorus Creek Improvement Project cannot move forward without the bridge replacement. We will be partnering with the York County Economic Alliance to help bring this plan to fruition. Our Department of Economic and Community Development has been active in assisting businesses, residents, and individuals through the various bureaus. We continue to provide grants to businesses and nonprofits through our ARPA funds. The city's comprehensive plan is nearly complete. Took a little lull because of COVID, but it's nearly complete, and we will see the completed product in 2024. One of the things we've heard through those listening sessions, and really everywhere, is that we are in a housing crisis, and that is true for much of the country. This includes the state of our current housing and the need for more housing to reduce demand and stabilize the increasing rental rates. To better address the state of housing, our BLIGHT task force has been restructured and is functioning to improve the state of properties in our cities or to have them condemned and positioned for improvement and better use. We have an additional $550,000 now, thank you to Council, in this budget to fight BLIGHT in 2024, or it will be added. To address the availability of houses, we must, one, keep people in healthy existing houses, and, two, build more new units. In 2024, we will support keeping individuals in their homes at Hudson Park Towers with funding to improve those 75 homes. The residential development market is strong, and we expect to see hundreds of new units come online in the next few years, including redevelopment on and in the area of the Dens Play Campus and the Northwest Triangle. But to encourage more affordable housing, we have included more than $4.2 million in this budget in developer incentives that we hope will stimulate the development of more than 100 additional new affordable units over the next four years. As an additional incentive, we have developed the housing redevelopment overlay to allow for more units of housing to be developed in the city during this national housing crisis. To assist in that development, we have hired a new building code official to bring more productivity and control of inspections in-house, which will in turn promote faster turnaround and an overall better process for commercial and residential development within York City. We have, and will continue, to increase our activity with the County Coalition on Homelessness, and we are partnering to expand services to support those that need assistance in finding their way out of the various causes of homelessness. Working with Wellspan Health, the York City Bureau of Health has brought on Dr. Tomy Uwazota as our Medical Director. She brings incredible additional medical expertise and practice to our Bureau of Health. In 2023, the Bureau made great strides in communication, particularly with our Latino population through our "It's Worth a Shot" and School Vaccinations programs. As always, the Bureau provides services to our residents at the City Health Clinic at 435 West Philadelphia Street. The York City Fire Department continues to provide the highest levels of service to our residents and businesses. And I want to repeat something that I reported for the first time during last year's budget adoption. The superior service of the York City Fire Department is now an objective fact. As the recognized expert and advisor to insurance company, the Insurance Services Office has increased York City's preparedness rating from a three to a two on a scale of 1 to 10, with one being the highest. This score is determined by an audit, including water supplies, personnel, and equipment. In addition to two new engines placed into service last year, 2023 saw the purchase of one new ladder truck and an additional fire engine. This puts the York City Fire Department in the best position for being equipped since the 1950s. The more than $3 million restoration of the historic Rex Laurel Fire Station is now underway. This will restore one of the five oldest active fire stations in the country. The Eagle Fire Station on Jackson Street has been reopened to support the Fire Department, while improvements at Rex Laurel are being made. While there are so many accomplishments and goals to be proud of this year, I believe the greatest accomplishment is our York City Police Department's partnership with the community. We have seen a record decline in homicides in York City, and the community has worked with our detectives to produce an 83% closure rate on the homicides that have occurred to date. To say the national average is somewhere between 52, it's reported 52% in one and about 62% in another statistic. In 2023, we have seen to date a 70% reduction, 70% reduction in homicides, with 26 days left in the year, and a 75% reduction in homicides by firearms. We have seen a 69% reduction in persons struck by firearms. We have seen a 69% reduction in persons struck by firearm projectiles. I want to congratulate our community. I want to congratulate our police officers for this amazing turnaround from a very sad year in 2022. This budget includes over $3.4 million in ARPA funding to help continue our increase in the number of police programs, our police officers, our Group Violence Intervention Initiative, and our Police Cadet Program to recruit local young people as the next officers policing their own streets. To conclude, I wish to say York City has had an amazing year. As a mayor, I can only ask that 2024 continue on the same path. We will always have financial difficulties until the state legislature reforms the property tax-based taxation system. But the sale of the wastewater treatment plant is doing what we hoped. This budget provides improved services and infrastructure and another year without any property tax increase for York City residents. I am pleased to deliver this budget to City Council, and I hope that you feel you can support this. Thank you for all of your work. And thank you, York City, for supporting me and this administration as we try to give you the safe, healthy, prosperous home that you deserve. Thank you.
Great. Good job, Mayor.
Thank you. Take it to the city.
Thank you, and I'll repeat what I said a meeting or two ago, as vocal as I can be about being displeased with the process for budget season, I can be just as vocal as being pleased with the process. So thank you to the administration for all of your work, all of the employees for the City of York, thank you for your work, and to council as well, thank you for your work. With that being said, we will call the roll for final passes of Bill Number 55.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. And that is so ordered. Moving on to final-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to final passes of Bill Number 56.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council?
Just to let the audience know, that's the bill adopting the 2024 tax rate.
And I'll just make the comment that, as the mayor indicated, there is no change.
No increase, right?
No increase or decrease, no change, which is great.
Decrease would be good.
Oh, come on.
Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Buckingham, oh, Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. That is so ordered.
President Walker, I'm sorry, the agenda number five is pulled from the agenda.
Thank you. We will move on to our next introduction, amending Article 545.
So introduced.
And that is Bill Number 57, introduced by Lou Rivera. That is amending Article 545, public-private property towing to establish fees and amend rates for towing and storage services and update definitions to include salver.
And that will sit until our December 19 meeting. Moving on to new business, is there a motion for consideration of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council?
I have none.
None.
I'll just go with my normal, since we did not have committee, I would be in favor of discussing these items. Any public comment? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll for consideration of consent agenda?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
No. The motion carries. We will move forward with the consent agenda. Council, please review items seven through 13. If there are any items that you would like to pull, please share them.
I would like to pull items 10 and 13.
Items 10 and 13, any other items? All right. Is there a motion to approve items 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments for items 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12 from council?
I have none.
I have none.
None.
Any questions or comments for 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12 from the public? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. Those items are approved, that is so ordered, and we have items 10 and 13 that are pulled. Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Council President Walker. So introduce.
And that is, is that the probationary police officer?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number, that will be Resolution 115.
115.
And that is introduced by Queen of Washington, and it is appointing six police officers as probationary police officers, and those officers are Terry York, Heather Gier, or maybe Geary, Louis Lopez, Brandon Arnold, Israel Carrion Cruz, Ricky Hackney Jr.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments, council?
I have none. I don't know if Captain Akey has any.
Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. That is so ordered, and moving on to, that would be Resolution Number 118?
Correct.
All right.
So introduce.
Okay, and that is Resolution Number 118, introduced by Queen of Washington. Now there, before, I'm sorry, is there a motion introduced by short title?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Resolution 118, introduced by Queen of Washington, a resolution adopting a policy promulgating guidelines for police officers of the City of York to follow in making arrests without warrant upon probable cause in accordance with 42 PACS Section 8902.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from council?
I do have a question. If you look under Section 2, under the policy, Section 2, subsection 4, it states, "If possible, the arresting officer should be in uniform or display some badge of authority." And I just had a question for Captain Akey, what would happen if there was an individual that we had to perform a warrantless arrest on, and the officer was not in uniform or did not have a badge to display?
They would identify themselves as such, and if reasonable and practical, they would call a uniformed officer to come to them, but as we know, sometimes things have to happen in the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Captain Akey, before you head out, can you just give whatever information you would like to give in regards to this resolution?
That was going to be quick for me, I'm sorry. So again, I'm Captain Akey at the York City Police Department. We've proudly been an accredited police department since 2014. Very few departments in Pennsylvania have gone through the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police accreditation process, and part of that is they have 125 standards and best practices that police departments are to follow. Out of those 125 standards, they'll tell you what the standard is, but they don't tell you how to write the written directive and the content for it. We've gone through three reassessments since this time period, and each time, three different assessors will come in with different sets of eyes. Some of them will accept what you have written, other ones will want you to make some changes here and there to make things more clear. And in this case, this is the first time that they've looked at this section for statute authority, which our policies and procedures all follow rules of criminal procedure. Under the Third Class City Charter, we are allowed to make these warrantless arrests with Title 11 under cities, but they wanted us to be more clear and go this route, so the next assessors that come in won't have us spinning our wheels for about two, two to three days trying to make them happy with any changes. So this should be the only time that we should have to touch this section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Public?
Hi, Elizabeth Bupp, 19 South Pine Street. I wasn't going to ask about this, but now I'm curious if this is new. I was curious to know, under what conditions they could, the police could perform warrantless arrests in the past?
Did you say in the past? Okay.
For this, with a list of four different, what do we call them, offenses, right? Disorderly conduct, public drunkenness, obstructing highway, and underage purchase or possession of liquor. Were those the four cases they would do warrantless arrests in the past, or was it maybe just not called out? I'm just curious. Thanks.
Captain Akey?
Those arrests were made in the past because they followed under the City Charter under Title 11 with the authority for us to do that. It was clearly written in Title 11 that we could do that. Again, these assessors were confused about the language that we had used to provide for that proof, and that's why we're updating it now, so it'll be more clear to them when they come back in again. All right?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Walker?
Washington?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. And that is so ordered. No requests for future meetings. Any council comment?
I have a comment, and I'm sorry Samantha Dorn is not here, maybe she's listening. Last year, I participated in the relaying at Lebanon Cemetery. It's very moving on so many different levels I won't get into, but one thing that our community needs to understand is, this is not just a local event. I talked to people there who were from Washington DC and other places who travel our country to participate in relaying days. So it was really gratifying to me to see, you know, what an event it is and how much it means to people. If you've never visited Lebanon Cemetery, I would encourage you to do so. It's, you know, that little baby section, it was just amazing, and the veterans of the Great War, they didn't expect a war of war two. It was just, it was very moving, so I just wanted to say that.
And they have some of the most beautiful older sculptures in that cemetery. It's just beautiful. Now it's beautiful, thanks to Sam and the crew.
Thank you. Administration comment?
Well, just on that note, I got the pleasure to visit one of our small businesses here in York right across the street at 96 South George Street, and they are an augmented reality, I think I've got that, yeah, augmented reality firm, that they are creating an experience where you can go to Lebanon Cemetery, and there's little markers at the different graves, and it pulls up the pictures and the stories of the individuals that are buried there. And so that was a very exciting experience, and they're looking to do a lot, and they've done some stuff around the county, but they're looking to do a lot more here in the city, so that's going to be very exciting.
Would you say they were called augmented reality?
No, what was the name again, Scott? No, augmented reality is what they do, but what is? I'll look at, while I'm making my next comment, I'll try and look it up in my calendar. I got both their business cards, and they're sitting on my desk, so. I did want to respond to Mrs. Rolader and let you know that the bright light out there is ours, not the bank's. We put the light out there. And also that the lights that we have, we have installed lights, unfortunately, they're motion detection lights, so you're not getting as much light as you want because they're saving electricity. Now, we're going to look at the settings on those to see if we can improve those settings. Also, regarding lights along the path, they have been looking at appropriate lights and have not picked out the proper lights, so there is an update, and it is Vision Solutions AR. Sorry, gentlemen, you gave such a good presentation today, but I had a busy day. Vision Solutions AR, again, a small business, a small tech business right across the street and kind of bringing more tech industry to the City of York, so that's very exciting. On a different note, I did want to acknowledge, I'm not sure yet if I'm going to be able to be here at the next meeting, but I wanted to acknowledge the loss of Harry O'Colone. He was a leader in our community and a leader in the hip-hop community and had the underground for over 25 years out on East Market Street, and, you know, I think a lot of people know him as different things. I know him as a person that was just 100% giving to his community and was constantly willing to take on anything to make his block safer. I was living the next block up in the early 2000s when it was absolutely horrible on that block, because I would walk from downtown to where I was living on the 800 block, and all kinds of crime happening basically out in the open, and he helped our police force and the neighborhood, really clean that, clean that neighborhood up. And we lost him unexpectedly here this past week, so in case I am not here, we are going to do a proclamation and see what we can do, but I just wanted to acknowledge Harry O'Colone and all of the amazing talent and support and work that he gave to-
Are you saying Harry, middle initial O?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanted to acknowledge, yeah, most people just know him as Harry O., but he just gave and gave to this community. And if I'm not here, Lou and Sandy, thank you. Bye. Nice knowing you. Thanks, Dee. Thanks, Dee, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be sincere over here.
Okay.
Diana?
Turn off my microphone.
Diana, do you remember when, Diana, do you remember when I was sworn in, he was on with the, in the wheelchair that he sat in the front there?
Who was in the wheelchair?
Harry. Harry O. You were busy doing a lot of stuff, but he was here for our sworn in.
Lou and Sandy, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I definitely concur our condolences to Harry O's family for Ms. Rolader. We have, there has been plenty of discussion, so you haven't seen the results yet, but there has been discussion, so thank you for your persistence and your dedication to our community as well. We thank you.
I will thank you for your dedication.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate it, absolutely. And then Ms. Dorn left, but we're very thankful to her and her team for their service, for the upkeep of Lebanon Cemetery with the Friends of Lebanon Cemetery, and also to those who serve on the nonprofit for Lebanon Cemetery, and we- And we have learned the lesson during Black History Month to make sure that we focus on City of York residents when it comes to honoring our past. And we thank all the team that has done research and published the books, so we thank you all for your hard work.
I did want to add, Captain Akey, that Elizabeth Bupp will be a new councilwoman effective January. I didn't know if you knew that, or for everybody else's.
All right, it's hot in here, so everyone have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.